Welcome, everyone, to the public hearing for the Delaware County Council for the 2019 budget. We're here tonight for anybody that is new to our meetings, our members of council, or to my far right, Councilman Brian Zidek, to my immediate right, Vice Chair Colleen Marone, I'm John McLean, to my left is Councilman Mike Colt, and to my far left is Councilman Kevin Madden. The purpose of our meeting tonight, in those which was duly advertised, is for the purpose of reviewing the proposed budget for Delaware County for calendar year 2019. The total proposed amount of $354,877,000, providing for a tax levy for general county purposes at a rate of 4.679 mils for each dollar of assessed property valuation, with a sum of .4679 dollars on each $100 of assessed property valuation. And taxes looking for debt service at the rate of .925 mils for each dollar of assessed property, or .0925 dollars on each $100 of assessed property valuation. Copies of the proposed budget are available for all tonight on the table in the back. Meetings open for public questions or statements with the request that we'll have is just that you come to the podium and just tell us who you are and the address is for the purposes of our minutes. So with that, we will turn to our Executive Director, Mary Ann Grace, to present the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to just step down here and refer to the charts that we have presented to show tonight. We're starting with the revenue and the fund balance and the expenditures. And, as you know, the budget that my office along with our Budget Director in his staff, the budget that we are proposing does not require mileage increase for this year. And what on our revenues, what we are starting with is an unassigned fund balance of $15 million, and real estate taxes of $175,589,000, federal and state grants, $94,600,000, other income of $37,470,000, and departmental earnings of $32,592,000. And we have made copies of this, and it's available for everyone to look at, because across the room, my demarcity was familiar. For the expenditures, the Administration of Justice, which is 41% of the general fund budget, is $145,981,000. Social welfare, social welfare includes the county match to human services, as well as the Fair Acres expenditures. Our social welfare is $84,46,000. The government operations and some other miscellaneous expenses, it's $86,894,000. Our debt service, which is the debt on the capital expenditures that we have, refinance through borrowings, this is the debt service that we have, it is $29,396,000. And transportation is $8,560,000. So I can take everybody to look at the detail. We put together five charts on what the details are here. So for our expenditures, Administration of Justice, as I pointed out, Administration of Justice is a large portion of the county's general fund budget. The Administration of Justice, this includes the courts, it includes the prison, it also includes the district attorney, the public defender, the 911 center, the sheriffs department, our medical examiner, the Office of Judicial Support, as well as our CID. So there are a number of departments that are categorized under Administration of Justice. The next category, the next largest, or almost largest, that I had spoken about, social welfare, as I said, the social welfare is Fair Acres, which is our over 800-day nursing home located in Lima, and also the county match to human services. It's not the full human services budget, that is separately, it is not part of the general fund, but the match is part of the general fund. So that's why we include that here. Our government operations, which are all of the various government departments, many of the departments that report to my office, others, some report to our big county council, but, you know, it's largely the operations of the county, from our budget department, our HR department, our IT department, planning, those types of departments make up general government. And the general government is 24% of our overall budget. As I said, debt service, the county does, we do borrowings at various times, we do borrowings to support the capital expenses that we have here in the county. We have a large complex, a number of significant responsibilities and capital purchases, and the county generally goes out on notes or loans to fund those expenditures, and then we have to pay it back. So this is our debt service, and that's 8.3% of our overall general fund budget. Transportation, as I said, $8.5 million in transportation. Transportation is the funding that the county provides to SEPTA. All of the counties in the region have a, an amount, a share, that we fund SEPTA, we fund a portion of their operations, we fund a portion of their capital, and we fund a portion of their paratransit as well. So that's the 8.5 million that comes from our general fund budget that goes directly to SEPTA. There are our expenditures in our revenue. One thing I'm always note, because I had to position myself, and note that less than, just about 50% of our budget comes from tax revenue, which I think is significant, because that says a whole other 50% comes from work that is really, that the county is able to accomplish, and work that the county does in bringing in the other revenue. So our real estate tax provides $175,589,000, or 49.5% of our revenue. Federal and state grants, 25, 26%, almost a quarter of our, almost a quarter of our revenue comes from federal and state grants. And some of these grants are our competitive grants that our offices identify and go out and get the grants, some of them by the nature of the job. There are grants that are available to them, you know, like adult probation, juvenile probation, there's certain performance that, of course, they have to meet, and then there are grants that come from the state. We also have under, in the grants, we are also including the medical assistance and the Medicare. Most of the residents at Fair Acres, the large majority, would be on medical assistance, and for some services at some times, it could be Medicare services that are provided. So we also recognize our medical assistance and Medicare revenue that we bring from Fair Acres into the federal grants. We receive, our domestic relations department receives grants from the, they come, I think it's federal money, comes from the state, it's Title IVD. And then, as I said, our juvenile court and our adult probation departments, they also receive, I think, you both know this, I think it's around $600,000 or about $700,000 from the state. We have departmental earnings, and the departmental earnings include things such as the Office of Judicial Support. The Office of Judicial Support has fees for all of the various filings. As you can imagine, there are many, many different types of civil and criminal filings that go through our Office of Judicial Support. So these are user fees that are being paid for that. We also have the recorder deeds, when someone is recording their deeds, there are fees, the sheriff, there are deeds that are various work that is provided by his office, user fees, as well as the register of wills, 911, the prison, and the medical examiner, also there are fees that come in there. Other income, other income is 10% of that budget, and there are some miscellaneous things, I would say, there are some different court cost and fines, some of the various court open fines that don't fit some of the more specific categories. There's commissions on the tax claim department. The DUI program has income for people that go through the DUI program here, there's certain income that comes to the county. We also recognize our gaming revenue here, most of you are aware, that was a casino, that we are the host county for a casino, so we have gaming revenue that we recognize in other income. Interest income, interest on the general fund investments, general fund, the money in the general fund, we receive interest. And we also have Act 164 is included in here, and this is, I believe it was new to us last year, but it's been more substantial this year. This is something that probably most of you in the room have contributed to at one time or another, Act 164, our fees that are associated, small fee, when you are using Uber or Lyft and you're going to the airport. And so there's legislation that all the counties are getting, getting revenue from there. So that's, I did Act 164. So these are the revenues and the expenditures. As I said, this budget does not require a tax increase, and what I failed to mention, the unassigned fund balance. We have an unassigned fund balance, we are utilizing, we are proposing utilizing $15,220,000 of our unassigned fund balance, and that this would then give us a budget, a balanced budget, that would not require a tax increase. So I'm here for any other questions. Jim in his staff is here, if there are any questions that you have with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, so with that, we will entertain public comment, questions on the budget. So as I said, when I opened up, if members of the public have comments or questions, please just step to the podium and just for our record counts, who you are and where
Chairman McLean, members of county council and county government, I'm Zerdi Dobi from Tinnicum Township. As I have in previous years, since 2015, the airport agreement on page two of your revenue listing, receipts in lieu of taxes, Philadelphia International Airport, $621,000, which you are receiving. Again, I protest this receipt for this money for the following reasons, and I'm going to reference the airport agreement itself. On page three of the airport agreement, it says the following, "The tax guarantee and the other payments described herein are to replace lost tax revenue." Page four, under the tax guarantee payments, number three, fixed payment, on or prior to September the first of each year, the city shall pay $1,864,000 to the township as the escrow agent for the taxing authorities. And that figure should be divided equally among the county, the district, and the township, except as provided herean. The term during which the city is obligated to make these payments is for 20 years, or when the Delaware County portion of the CEB, or the capacity enhancement program, is completed, whichever is later. The taxing authorities covenant that in the event of any dispute among them concerning the allocation of a fixed payment, it shall not involve the city in any way. And that's my point of entry. I ask that you, and I've already addressed Mr. Madden and Mr. Zidek at previous meetings, to review the document, which they say that they have actually looked at, and to readjust that figure to provide the equivalent amount according to the tax rate of the assessed value in 2013, which is the tax figure, which would reduce your payment from $621,000 to approximately $180,000. And to return that money, just more than $400,000, for the Interboro School District children's education. Now, I've done this to the township, I've also done this at the previous meeting this held this past Monday for the Interboro School District at their reorganization meeting. They just sit there and look at me. Now, you should do this by yourself, as the right thing to do for the children's education. There was a headline article in the Daily Times about the tax that you're going to have this year, you were going to introduce a, or have a possible reduction in taxes. Is that, is that the case, or is it the same mileage rate that you had last year?
Mr. Dobi, the budget that's been presented is the same tax mileage rate as last year. I'll address it later, but I filed comments among other members of council, long budget as per the Home Rule Charter, where I believe that we can do a decrease this year. And, you know, I, my plan is to introduce that at a time when we're adopting the budget.
Okay. And if you can introduce that as a tax reduction for the taxpayers of the county, then you can include a tax reduction for that, or adjustment for that payment, that tax guaranteed payment for the airport, and return that money for, from now on, to the Interboro School District for the children's education. One of the parcels in the airport agreement is the Henderson property. It's the largest parcel that the city of Philadelphia is trying to acquire, it's 144 acres, more than 144 acres. Now, there've been a number of articles that appeared this past, in February, talking about that the Henderson group was selling that for $54 million. The assessment from the county on that property is $10,900,000. So we have been losing money by way of this assessment from the county in value for the taxes. If they're going to sell for $54 million, then we've been losing money for years. If the only assessment is only $10,900,000, it's, it's pretty significant in its amount. One other thing, as I go up this topic at a number of meetings, I asked if the representation, because there are a number of lawsuits that have been filed on behalf of the Henderson property owners against the city of Philadelphia. And one of the representatives was for, was named in the lawsuits as Andrew Riley representing the Henderson group. I asked at a public meeting if that was the same Andrew Riley that was chairman of the Democrat, I mean, the Republican Party of Delaware County. And I never received any answer from any, when Chairman Severa was the Delaware County Council Chair. And considering that the city of Philadelphia and the representatives for the Henderson property, which includes Mr. Riley, if he's the person that I'm referencing, have been in negotiations for that property sale since 2008. That was way before the city of Philadelphia and the federal government announced the capacity enhancement program, Record of Decision, in 2010. So they've been mailing up a number of legal bills, charging it to the Henderson people, and they're making a lot of money. Now, since Mr. Zidek and Mr. Madden have taken office this past January, there's been a lot of conflict or discussion amongst you as Delaware County Council members. And they brought up a number of issues, and the explanation is, or the, said that you've talked about political motivations for the comments made by partners. Now, if Andrew Riley and the law firm that you're a part of, Chairman McLean, is representing the Henderson group, I think that's a significant issue. He's been interviewed by the Daily Times, and he's even been interviewed on talk radio, that they're trying to, he's trying to find out, they're trying to discuss as to why the election this past November went so wrong for the Republican Party. But the Daily Times supporters have never probed the real reasons, or the underlying reasons, as to why the Delaware County Council, the current majority, which you have had in Republican control for decades, will change to Democratic rule next year, in next year's elections. And that is some of the reasons why, is because the underlying fact that you have these things that take place that people are, may not be aware of, but sometimes they find out by other means. So I think that it's important that in your budget, as you deliberated, I think that you should return that money for the education of the children of the Interboro School District. As to a question that was raised by Mr. Madden, he asked a month, several months ago, for a list of contracts that the county had, and Mr. Madden indicated that he was compiling that list. Has that list ever been presented to Mr. Madden?
It has not.
It has not. And so that's a problem. Also, at the, one of your meetings, you had the sheriff, Sheriff Sanders, talk about you giving a $5 an hour increase to the sheriff's department employees. Is that in this budget, are you, are you giving them any kind of raise?
There's not a five hour an hour increase for-
But there is an increase?
There is an increase in the budget.
Okay. So, so there is an increase from what he, he asked for $5 an hour, but it is more than zero, somewhere between zero and five?
Well, I think all the employees are getting a 3% increase. I'm not sure that the, I'm not as sure whether Sheriff Sanders' budget is as, so that he is, but I don't know that there is a materially greater increase for the sheriff's deputies than there are other employees in the county. So I don't want you to be left with the impression that, that there is some substantial increase going to the sheriff's deputies, but, but Mr. Hayes or Ms. Grace could perhaps correct me on that.
No, you're right. At this point, what we have in this budget is a, what we, in this budget proposal, is a 3% increase for all employees.
Okay. And finally, I come to meetings, I think at your level, and I mentioned that the fact that the county clock in front of the courthouse displays the wrong time. You haven't corrected it as of yet.
We keep working on it. I think we should get rid of the clock.
Mary Ann, that's not hard.
No. All right.
For members of the public, Mr. County.
John Butler Romo. I'm looking at the audit, because really, the most present here really doesn't have all that detail. And I'm really looking at the prison, and it looks like on the budget, it went from $48 million to $49 million, $49,000 to start with. And I know you pulled out some of the earnings. But when I look at the audit, it, under corrections, it says program revenues, and it goes from $7.8 million in 2008, we had a high of $12,500,000 in 2013, I think that's when you may have taken prisons in from outside the county, I'm not sure. And this year, 2017, it was $7,500,000.
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at the audit.
Yeah, I'm looking at the caper, the caper. Consolidated annual financial-
Okay, yeah, okay. And, and yet we're showing income of like $22.5 or $2.8 million coming from the prison.
I don't understand your question.
What's, why do we, in this new budget presented here, you only, you show less than $3 million of income, and yet the audit adds it up like $7.8. And in fact, there's other categories that are included besides the prison in that, in the caper. By any sort of persons, I don't have a lot, I don't have the, the prison revenues that are reflected on page two, those are the actual revenues of the prison. That's what, $100 fee and the $20 fee, there's a booking fee, there's, it makes sense. Room and board fees, they have a comp, they have a small comp back to the property, so it won't leave.
But by far, the biggest of the, of the $2.8 million, $1.8 million is the inmate telephone fund, it's the telecommunications fee. So just to, just to be clear, where the, where the bulk of the money is, the revenue is coming from, it's the, it's the telecommunications fee that prisoners pay when they, when they call outside of the prison.
So how much do they have to pay to make the call outside? Or can they receive calls for free? I don't know if that's a tax. Next seems to be an excessive charge, one way.
It's a substantial charge, I don't know what this, what the number is, my recollection, what I heard is that, you know, my eyebrows were raised several times, but I don't, I don't have a great point of reference to know what other jails charge folks to make phone calls. It's not a, it's not a payphone, you don't put a dime in the phone and make the call.
So like if they have, are they allowed to have cell phones in there?
No.
So to communicate, they have to pay this phone communication charge?
To, to make a phone, to communicate outside, yes, I mean, they could have visitors and communicate that way, but-
But to make anything over a phone, in or out, they got to pay that charge?
I believe that's the answer, yes.
I can't imagine cellphone use of the prison, I don't know.
I don't know either. I'm just, I heard it's $1.5 million that the county's making off people trying to communicate on the outside, for $1.8, and I think that's pretty excessive. I mean, I have a real problem making money off of prisoners, especially when they're restricted, I mean, nobody's really paying for phone calls today. And it'd be nicer than if you're allowed to communicate outside. But I'm kind of curious about where the extra leaves are coming in on that line. I got to look, there's financial or legal purposes, there are more items included in that corrections, rather than mine, than just the prison. But stuff is basically with the prisoner, that operation of the- It's included in that, that's where it's coming from, not just the prison, you referenced a number of $7 million on that. Yeah, so there's additional, I don't have the details for me, but what you see in this budget is reflective of what the actual prison revenues are. Just the booking fee of $100, and it should be around $1 million, there's about $5, $6, $5, $8, something like that.
$5, $8, what's in there? $5, $8, which you have in the 2019 budget, the booking fees.
The amount billed should be close to $1 million, because they have to pay $100 to go in there, and 50 days average time in there. I mean, I figure there's 10 million, 10,000 people go through every year, and $20 room charge per day, it's like about $10 million if you're collecting. We're not- Talking with Mr. Butler, you don't collect all those monies from all prisoners? Well, it sounds like we're not collecting any gold. I, I have a real problem tracking it, but what is billed to them, am I collecting? Where does it show up? Because I remember in government, you give somebody a bill, it becomes a liability, receivable, and somehow you have to eliminate receivable. And normally, it was on the bill. So I'm just curious, if you bill them, how does it disappear?
So it might not surprise you to hear that I have a problem with the way our prisons are being run, because so much of it is done outside of our herding. So it feels, it's redundant for me, and I apologize for being redundant, but we don't frankly know all that much about what goes on in the prison. It's not if the prison board runs the prison, and, you know, we are, my insight into how the prison is run is constrained to what the prison board tells me, and what I can find in a budget or a caper, or visiting it myself and, you know, talking to people there, but I don't, I'm not avoiding your questions, I simply don't have the answers to many of them.
I can't give answers either. But my understanding is those booking fees and the room charge is given to the county.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
So if they bill a prisoner one week, it would be $280,000, and maybe get a bill, I would assume. And that's supposed to go to the county. Now, that's outside of the prison board, I gather. How does it get knocked down, because what is actually received?
Well, I think the prison board would be the collecting agency, not, not us, so we're reliant upon their collections, unless Mr. Hayes is shaking his head.
That's correct, yes, our, this is reflective of actual collections that we receive, so.
But I don't believe there are any county, there are any employees at the county who are, who aren't seeking to collect those monies, or, or involved in the collection of those monies.
Mr. Butler, I reiterate what we spoke about last week in terms of government structure, that we are the only county in Pennsylvania in which the prison operation is overseen by an unelected five-person board. And that includes both day-to-day management, as well as responsibility for contracts of any size. Other departments, we as a county council must approve contracts over $25,000 in nature. That's not the case with regard to the prison boards. So again, to kind of touch upon what Brian said- So again, to kind of touch upon what Brian's saying, we don't have a real say over how these decisions are made. And aside from being like you and asking and hopefully getting an answer, we don't have insights into day-to-day decision-making of these sorts.
Well, the other problem is apparently there's never been an audit. So for fifty million dollars of every money, there should have been an audit somehow. And Mr. Butler, that's what you're saying is not true again. When you listen to people say that the contract speaks about an audit, and audit, and prison term means that audit from an agency such as the Department of Corrections and American Correctional Association, those audits happen. I'm not, I'm not arguing that that's an operational audit.
You're telling me financial.
I'm looking at financial audit. They've gotten fifty million dollars of public money, and apparently there's never been any audit. They ask them a simple question of how much is billed and how much is collected, how's it being recorded? And nobody asks an answer. But yet we give the prison fifty million dollars a year, and it apparently is not being audited. And. Well, they were billed. I would suggest that you go to the prison board meetings and ask them those questions if you want to know about the county. On one hand, you say you don't think they should be charged anything, but apparently on the other hand, you're suggesting that we ought to go and sue prisoners who don't- All right. Because you're asking about what is, what efforts the county or the prison board makes in order to collect fees that are charged but are not collected. So, you know, I don't know the answer in terms of how they handle the accounting wise. I'll leave that to controller and the accountants. You know, but you've heard the answer in regards to there are fees that are charged. These are the amounts that are actually collected and budgeted, what we can expect as budget for two thousand and nineteen to expect to receive.
I, I did ask the question, Mr. Butler, to the prison board at one of the meetings, when they had it on a, on a week when we were able to attend. We didn't have a county council that meeting that weekend. One of the prison board members said that he didn't understand why an audit would be fruitful because they had a, a fixed fee that they were to pay under the, under the budget. You know, my, my impression is that an audit would be fruitful because it's not a fixed fee. It is a fee that has, that is based upon variables that aren't fixed. So if, for instance, the number of prisoners is less than eighteen hundred eighty-three, then the county receives thirty dollars per person back. Now that, that presumably wouldn't take a great audit to figure that out. That should be a number that's, that's easily seen. But what is more complex would be the penalties that the prison operator would be forced to pay if they are not staffing the prison as called for in the contract. That I would submit is an item that should be audited. We don't, if, if, if I were running the prison, I would want to reconcile the, the staffing with the payroll records from the company that's, that's operating it and, and determine whether or not those fees are, whether or not penalties should be imposed and at what level. The contract also provides for the ability of, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe the superintendent has the authority to waive some of those penalties if he so chooses. So I don't know whether any of them have been waived or whether none of them have been waived, but that is another possibility. And so again, I, I believe a financial audit, which I understand has not ever been done, would be in order and would be sort of remotely best practices.
Is the superintendent- I suggested that accountant does, is accomplished.
We've been told it has not, though. We, I believe that is, our controller, Ms. Phillips, asked for a copy of any financial audit that was done. We were told that-
An order of G O.
No.
No.
An audit of prison.
I had, I sent correspondence requesting copies of any audits, financial audits that have been done on the contract, based on the contract terms. I thought there were two opportunities for financial audits. One was G O would provide an annual, and then that may be what you're speaking to Mr. McLean about some state audits. And there was also the ability for the prison board to review financial records. I was advised by Mr. Diureo that there were no such audits.
Does the superintendent, does he work for the county or?
He is a county employee, yes. My understanding.
Yes, yes.
Is he paid by the county or is he paid by the prison board?
He's paid by the county.
County, by the county.
So, I mean, can he answer any of these questions?
Yes.
Yes.
But, you know, I, I only went to one prison meeting, and he wasn't there. The other question I have, the actual for two thousand and seventeen was eight, forty-eight million. And we're saying the budget for this year is forty-nine eight, and it is for two thousand and nineteen, forty-nine eight. And my understanding, there is no contract. Where'd we come up with forty-nine eight for this coming year?
We had conversations, my office and Jim's office, we had conversations with Superintendent Riley, and that's where we got the number.
Did G O agree at first, Heather?
I haven't, I don't have any final detail on that, but I spoke to him again just this past week. We spoke to the superintendent, and he confirmed for us, we called him, I said, I want to make sure. And though I hadn't seen a signed contract yet, I said, I want to make sure we have the right number. And he said, that's the right number. He was right.
Is somebody signing a contract?
The prison board would handle that.
I mean, he don't, no, there's going to be a contract?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if there is, are you aware, Ms. Grace, of whether-
I believe that there's going to be a contract. I don't, I have not seen a signed contract myself in talking with the superintendent. He tells me that's going to be the budget and number that we need for two thousand and nineteen. I, so I feel that there will be a contract. I haven't seen one either, and it is the prison board that would be agreed to the contract, not county council. Doesn't come to me, doesn't come before county council.
Well, we spent almost half a million dollars to get an RFP. Now, were there ever any RFPs publicly advertised?
Yes.
I mean, RFP, yeah, request, they did, they did advertise requests for me, because as far as I know.
Did they, did they get any or?
Yes.
They did.
Were there one?
Yes.
We did, but we have not had a formal report as to the outcome of the RFP process.
And we don't have a study, the Phoenix study is long, long overdue. Okay. So did the contract go from forty-eight million to almost fifty, fifty million that I see from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen, was that part of the existing contract? The bump at that one?
Is that a net versus gross issue?
For the operation.
No, it's not a net versus gross.
For the operational management contract. From forty-nine eight to two thousand and eighteen, forty-nine eight four-four to forty-nine eight four-one. So it's actually a little bit less.
Not what's at two thousand and seventeen. From forty-eight million to forty-nine eight.
Seventy, actually.
That's the actual.
Yeah, an actual, because as, I, you can correct the rule, I think as Councilman Zidey said, it does vary, you know, with the number of eighteen eighty-three. We have a, a number that's guaranteed of eighteen eighty-three, but there is an over and under. If we're over or if we're under, so it could vary.
Is eighteen eighty-three two, two to the cell or is it?
I don't have all those details, John. I just-
I, I'm just, because, you know, they're talking about three in a cell with this, whatever you call it, bump bed or whatever I've heard. You've heard it.
We don't have the, it's not here.
So is eighteen eighty-three including that or?
It's, it's the total number.
Without that bump bed?
No, it, it definitely included some portion of people off their-
Yeah, it's total. Including three.
Total number.
Maximum capacity in the prison.
Total number.
Maximum capacity. That is the amount this contract, that's the amount that the contract is based on. So again, there are penalties if we are over, and we get credits if they are on. So if this can't bump it, I'm going to have, right, in you go.
Eighteen eighty-three's the number.
I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen anybody talk about what maximum capacity would be. Presumably there would be some federal guidelines that would, that would-
I just, I don't know that it's maximum capacity. It's a, it's an agreed upon capacity.
It's agreed on.
It's a contracted capacity.
I think the capacity should be without bumping.
I think the bump, just the bump, I think there was a schedule payment for operations that you were creating. So that, I don't know, I'm just, there's like bump beds.
Extra beds.
Oh, beds.
About one preceding question regarding the budget. Okay. I was looking at the pension. And on the audit, which doesn't, doesn't show on your budget, there's a service charge of fifteen five, fifteen million five, and an interest cost of almost thirty-four million.
You're, you're looking again at the-
Yeah, because the budget.
John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 the audit, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Because, because the budget really doesn't have detail that's presented here. Budget has budget detail. The consolidated annual financial report has all of the more detail that you would find in an audit. But I, I'm hoping you're familiar as a former government official. You know, that your audit is a different document than your proposed budget for the year. It's actions versus a project, but.
No, there are other things. In the, in the report that you're referring to, which I call the caper, the consolidated annual financial report, it is a very comprehensive report of all county activity. And so unfortunately, I want to say, I don't have the material in front of me, but I don't. Ms. Phillips, we, we did not bring that material with us. And so for us to really speak intelligently about it, we'd like to look at the same numbers, same pages as you are. What we were prepared, all prepared to do was talk about specifically what we had in the budget tonight. So, you know, other further questions, I think in another time, we'd be more than happy to entertain.
I'm just saying, you know, the county's budget is probably fifty or sixty pages. And here we get about ten pages.
I meant, everyone does.
It's a real slump at a high level. But I just see interest cost. I mean, I don't know if we have a guarantee of income in, billed into the pension, and we missed it, and we're making up shortfall on interest or what.
As you're, there's some other thing, but I didn't put it in. I have a pension now, yeah. It's such a-
And, and we have a golf course. And I looked at the budget or something, the audit before, I don't see where it is in the budget. But it looked like at one time we were getting some twenty-five thousand rounds a year. And now we're around ten. And I would make, make money.
There has been issues with the golf course, and we had issues a couple of years with, as a couple of courses around here have, with the greens and, you know, with the grass. And then we've also had issues because of the roadwork that is going on, have on three twenty-two there with the golf course.
Whether we're making money or not making money. We still have, apparently we've had the same five employees for ten years.
With the low rent that we have here, it's certainly not a moneymaker for the county, but it is a wonderful place for people to learn to play golf.
Are we writing even?
I had to go back and look.
Good.
It's really, it is part of our park system. And it has been looked upon not from, it has been really looked upon as a service that we give to the residents. And I don't know if you've ever used it, but it's where I learned to play golf, and I know many other people. And it's a great place. You'll see fathers and sons and mothers and daughters. And it's, it's a great place to learn to play golf, and it is very inexpensive. And we have seen a decrease in utilization, and they say because of, we did have trouble with, you know, some of the main, you know, the greens, and then also the construction has impacted it.
So I did our request for information on the utilities at the prison. And I think it was, the letter was sent to the prison board. Is that something I have to formally ask them to see those bills?
I forwarded your request to the prison board.
Right.
And I wrote you the letter.
Right.
Stating that.
So do I have to formally ask them to see the bills? Or is that normally something that they might?
I thought they would respond to you.
I haven't seen any yet.
But you would have to contact them directly. That's what I stated in my letter, because I don't, we don't have those documents here.
Okay.
So, but I did want to mention now that you're talking about that, I think you may have tried to send me one today through the fax. It did not come through on my end. It was cut off. So I wanted to let you know that if you wanted to resend it tomorrow.
Or just mail it to you.
Yeah, or if you have a copy, I'll take it.
I didn't, I didn't, I don't think I brought it tonight.
Okay.
Basically, I'm looking to see the, the contracted rates for electricity and gas and how much we pay to consult.
Well, if you could send that again, because I didn't, I couldn't even get a number off there.
All right. Thanks. Okay. Ethan?
Marching back from work from Middletown. I'd just like some information about the bail structure that the county utilizes. It's my understanding that the way we get, I assume this is the correct number, that nearly a million dollars, is that anybody who is granted bail in the county puts up the money, and even if they comply with all bail conditions and are ultimately exonerated, nonetheless, the county takes a big bite out of whatever was put forward to secure that bond. So we make money off the backs of people who are at least able to afford it and who are found not guilty of anything, which strikes me as exploitive. So I would like to know what the impact would be on budgetary considerations going forward if we were to try and rethink that and come up with a better system that hits the people who can least afford it a little less partially. And just to follow up on Mr. Butler's comment, pointing information, Mr. Riley, since the meetings at the prison board have been videotaped, he no longer is available for comment, and he makes no comment, and he sits in the back room and says nothing. So he is not actually addressing any questions that are raised during public comment at the prison board meeting. So if one of you could address the impact of the bail fees on the, the budget generally and our flexibility about changing our practices?
Well, I mean, it's ironic, I guess, that you're raising that, because Jim and I were just discussing that. We had a discussion yesterday about this. And I spoke with Jim, and we don't have the detail on that just yet. But it's, as I say, it's ironic, because I just asked him coming up here over this meeting. So we are looking at that. I don't know. I have heard over the years, I've spoken with our Office of Judicial Support where the bail comes from. But I'm sorry, I, I couldn't speak to it yesterday, and I really can't say what it is today. But we are looking into that to see exactly. I don't know exactly. I don't know. Has any information about that?
My understanding is that we, the county keeps forty percent, and that is an increase from thirty percent. I don't know when that increase occurred, relatively recently.
And who made that decision?
It wasn't during, not me.
And do we know what standard practices for counties in terms of hitting people accused of crimes of?
I will say it's been eliminated in nearby counties.
Correct. So it would seem to me it's something that Delaware County ought to be thinking about moving toward. And as a result, should be thinking forward in terms of its budgetary implications, because we can't build a budget on the backs of the people who can least afford it.
Somebody can make that motion if they choose to.
I'm sure we will.
Further members of the public?
Reverend for Meishron. Hopefully this should be pretty easy relative to some of the other stuff we've gone over. I noticed that there's no increase in the budget for voting machines. And I'm sure you're all aware, the governor, I think very wisely, has asked that all counties update the voting machines.
That would be a capital expense that wouldn't be in our operating budget.
It is, it is.
It's our campus.
So my question, my question therefore was, when are they, when, when are you planning to acquire them? How much will that cost? And where is that reflected on the, the capital investment?
It is in the capital budget. The, the governor's office, which you probably well know, the governor has mandated that all counties have voter verifiable paper ballots by the primary of two thousand and twenty. So we, all county council, have been really rigorous in their due diligence here looking at the various machines. One of the things that we're all hamstrung by is that machines have to be certified. And, you know, I know this is important for all of the public. Machines has to be certified by both the local government and the state government. So what we've been doing this, we've looked at many pieces of equipment that really, that haven't been certified yet because of the certification process, I guess, is arduous. And we will of course be buying machines that are certified by the feds and the state. So council has given their time. We have looked at them, looked at various, various pieces of equipment. We will be in compliance, and we will have the, the machines that are required by the primary of two thousand and twenty, if they're available sooner. And, you know, council, you know, I think it would be something that, the last time, I don't know if you were, you know, around the last time we did this, but when we changed to the type of machines that we have now, we did a, a really, we tried to do a really very thorough education. We worked closely with the League of Women Voters and the League worked with us in getting out to all of the public and educating the public on how to use the new machines. And I do think that this is even going to be more, require more education from the machines that I have seen so far. But we are committed to doing it. I believe we have seven million that we have in our capital for it. What I've seen most recently, nationwide, there's fourteen million at the federal level, which nationwide fourteen million is included to a lot. But there seems to be a commitment, C cap has notified all of us that there's a commitment to work with the legislature to, I think they're looking for at least a fifty percent match to the counties. I don't know whether or not that's going to happen, but we have built it into our capital budget. And, you know, rest assured, we will have those machines, and we are going to work to make sure that, that, that everyone understands how to use those voting machines and that it's seamless and that we- it's seamless and that we operate good elections.
And that will be every polling place.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. We will be in full compliance. We'll be everywhere.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further comments? Officer Sheriff?
Mr. Chairman. Council with large executive director race. Attorney Anne Phillips, Controller. I'm coming before you as a sheriff of Delaware County, not as a member of the public, but I do still, as a citizen, have the same concerns as I want to present to you. As sheriff, I really want to take this opportunity to thank council, Chairman McLean, always being available, executive director always being available with any questions I might have, so I thank you for that. I'm here this evening to just revisit what I brought before you in October, I believe, and just ask that we remain focused on an increase for our deputies. I heard you say tonight that there will be a general increase for the employees for Delaware County. I just want to state that the deputies are not general employees. Average employee does not risk their lives every day. And we cannot put a price on life, cannot do that. No matter what dollar amount that we come to an agreement about, it still will not reflect a price on life. That cannot be quantitatively assessed in dollars. But we can show that we do value the risk that our deputies take and all officers take by showing that there is a special dollar amount that can just reflect that we value what they're doing. And our deputies here are very little paid, fourteen dollars and ninety-seven cents an hour, I think twelve forty-nine an hour. And I'm just restating what you already know and what I stated in the past. And the reason that I said thank you at the beginning of this, this conversation is because you have received that. And I'm here to ask that we continue to focus on addressing this low salary. The average salary of a law enforcement officer in Delaware County is seventy-five thousand dollars. And our uniformed deputies start at less than twenty-four thousand. And the five dollar increase that I asked for would only take them to thirty-four thousand, where the average salary is seventy-five thousand. Thirty-four thousand from twenty-four thousand, thirty-four thousand. And so I just ask that we continue what you have joined me in, looking for ways to make this happen. Five dollars, five dollars. County has priorities. I would like this to remain at the top of your priorities, is making this happen. I can't tell you how, you control the purse strings, but I ask that you make it a priority. I've, we've had budget talks recently. I will amend my budget to ask for this five dollars specifically as an increase. I've had auditing done by our controller to come in and look and see where the money is spent. If there's anything that I don't know, is to be sure that this surplus of fat, so that we can identify it and make our budget lean in. And the controller has been very receptive and assigned her people to come in and take a look at everything that we're doing, because we don't, we don't want to come and ask you to take a look at everything that you're doing and not begin to hone. So I want you to know that I'm doing that in-house and ask that you do the same and that we pay our deputies, begin to pay our deputies what they deserve. This is a minimum. This is, this is not where I hope that we stop. This is where I hope that we start. Thirty-four thousand going toward an average, an average of seventy-five thousand. So I just ask that we continue with me our efforts to make this happen.
In terms of the amount, is there, do you know what that, I'm sorry, in terms of the amount, do you know what that relates into? If, if, if we were budget, what, what the total additional dollars would be?
What's that dollar amount?
We didn't have a question.
It's, okay, the root would take us five dollars times fifty-seven deputies, five dollars an hour, fifty-seven deputies.
Yeah, that's why I love the term budgetary impact.
And we're short ten deputies. That's another incentive to make this happen. We're always short. And then the low salary, what we have is people that graduate from the police academy, they're stopping it. It's a pit stop. And they're training, they're mandating the training with the Deputy Sheriff's Academy. It's also a pit stop, but they get the training and because of the low wage, they're on the way somewhere else. And we're incurring that expense, so we're really, long-term, we're not saving money. We're putting money, we're putting money out because they're stopping on the way. We're training for them because of another agency. So we would like, I really would like this to be a career choice and not a short stop on the way somewhere else. And it would be, we would be more fiscally responsible if we approached it in that way. And we're having this conversation, I'm expecting that we can have it, and let's move toward appropriately paying the deputies.
Sheriff Sanders, I'm sorry.
I know when you're, in the budget request, the six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for overtime, is there something that we think we could collectively do to, to reduce that? I don't know enough about your job to know, though I suspect that some overtime is necessary just due to the nature of the work. Would there be things that we could do as a county, either in the courts or with the, with the county, to try to make them more efficient? And that might be a way to free up money for a, for an hourly increase?
Well, being understaffed contributes to overtime, not having enough deputies to do the job, be it the street deputies or the court deputies. It's just not, and then you have higher, what we call higher profile cases that require more deputies to be assigned to that location than the other courtrooms. We supply that security at the expense of another courtroom, to every courtroom. It's potentially dangerous. So understaffing really contributes greatly to overtime. And understaffing is related to the low wages. It's hard to go to the academy. Our chief goes out to the police academy to new graduates, sharing within the opportunity, opportunity in the sheriff's office, twelve forty dollars, twelve dollars and forty-nine cents an hour. It's hard to get it in. It's just not attractive. And the risk involved, they can go and work at Burger King and not have the risk. And I think that we need to address it all. It's not any of one thing that I'm saying, it's everything that I'm saying. And if we address it together, I think that we can find a way to let our deputies know that we do value their risk that they take every day. I thank you for your beginning support and continuing support.
And we did, as a follow-up to the meeting, or when you presented me the presentation in October, we did have a meeting with our Director of Labor Relations as well as our Personnel Director. Under our ASB contract, we do have the ability to evaluate certain departments every year. We've chosen to do the Sheriff's Department, take a look at that. And look, and I did look at some of the numbers in your budgets submitted. I know that, you know, we need to sort of look at all those numbers. I certainly agree, and we had seven vacancies listed here, but I don't know if that's changed.
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, I think we need to look at those numbers and the overtime numbers, because they do it. I think I had sixteen of sixteen sergeants, corporals, or lieutenants. And their, with the average salary, before any overtime, is fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars for, for those command officers. And then when we get into deputy sheriffs, there were thirty-five on the roster at an average salary of about thirty-two thousand, almost five hundred dollars. So we're creeping towards that number, looking, compare that with overtime. I certainly agree that we need to take a look at how do we cut down on that overtime and filling those positions would be one of the ways we can do that.
And I want you to know, I've also reached out to the state, because the sheriff's fees have not, the fee schedule has not been adjusted for inflation since nineteen, since the eighties, since the eighties. And so the intake of funds is considerably less than it should be. So I have reached out to the state legislature, asking them to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further...
And for details, it's actually revisiting what we've already shared. Yeah, we all have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if there's no further public comment, we'll look to members of council. They have any comments this time. Sorry, Mr. Ty.
Less a comment, I've got a few questions. One, when I look back at the, the budgets that were presented in November of 2016 and November of 2017, the last page of them is a statement of bonded indebtedness. And it showed in 2016, one hundred and eighty-one million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. It showed in 2017, one hundred and sixty-seven million dollars. And then in 2018, it shows three hundred and one million dollars of indebtedness. And it looks to me that in previous year, there were only five bonds listed, and in the current year, there are, in addition to that, a further eight notes, or maybe nine notes listed. Is that, can you explain to me what the, what's happened there?
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we, yeah, I looked at the county code requirements for the bonus commission. And it does require statement of bonded indebtedness. Previously, you know, discussed with the solicitor. And the recommendation was that, you know, interpretation was just the bonds. We have bonds and those were capital. I relooked at it, I spoke to the executive director about it, I consulted our financial advisor, and we came to the conclusion, as was, as, as presentation, was to include all bonds and those, that that's really what the spirit of the, you know, that, that provision in the court of court. So that's probably what that is.
Okay, so these notes always existed, they just weren't on this page. It's not, I would have thought that I would have known.
We might do like an asterisk, maybe, Jim, on this, the way we've done on the prison, the prison revenue, maybe just asterisk. If you should write that, it becomes confusing to somebody. Jim and I talked about this this year. We had, kept it, you know, in the past, we had just looked at the bonds, we felt that we were doing what we were supposed to do. But, you know, I, we're talking about it, talking to Lucian Councilor, our financial advisor, and this was one of the things that came up in discussions. So we thought, no, why don't we just put everything on it? Even if it only requires the bonds, let's put all of it on it. So, I think, you know, maybe a few things, maybe that's what we can do as terms of notation.
I also would like to speak a little bit about the, the money set aside for the prison budget. When we set money aside for any department except for the prison budget, and let's say we, we set aside a million dollars for twenty positions to be filled in a particular department, and we only fill nineteen of them, and let's say they are all fifty thousand dollars, that, that department would, would be fifty thousand dollars under budget, their expenditures would be fifty thousand dollars under budget. And if they wanted to spend that fifty thousand dollars on, other than hiring somebody, if they wanted to buy, you know, new flat screen TVs for the whole, for everybody who, for the whole office, so we could, I don't know, watch MSNBC all day, they would have to, they would have to, and it was more than twenty-five thousand dollars, they would have to come before county council and, and request that. The prison is unique in that if they ask us for a budget of fifty million dollars and they only spend forty-eight million dollars, it's not as if that, that two million dollars would come back to us if they don't spend it, but if they decide to buy a bunch of flat screen TVs, they don't have to come before us. So it seems to me that it might be prudent for us to, rather than simply taking their request at the maximum amount of the contract and putting that in here, to be more judicious and put the amount that we might expect them to spend in that year. And so, Mr. Hayes, I'd ask you in the next few days, whenever you have time, for next week, to, to give us the average expenditure pursuant to the contract for, I guess we could do maybe the last two or three years, and we could examine whether or not, maybe it's bumps up right against it. They may always request forty-nine million, it always comes in at forty-eight eight or something like that. I don't, I don't know what the delta is, but, but if there's a significant delta, maybe that's an area we could consider cutting back. The question I guess I have is, if, if we put in, if they requested, let's say, fifty million, and we said, you know, we're only going to put forty-eight million in here because we think that's, we're not going to have eighteen hundred and eighty-three, we're going to average, you know, eighteen hundred people, that's what we'll be able to average. If they go over that, what would the process be for us to say, well, geez, they need more money? Would they, would they come to us and request more and we could grant that?
Yeah, they'd have to come before council, and we would have to do a budgetary transfer. We would have to find some spot to transfer it from. So whether we, you know, whether council would choose to set some amount aside for that contingency, you know, would be a priority, but that would have to be a, a budgetary transfer that would have to come before council.
So we would want to see the money in the budget somewhere, that we would be able to transfer it from.
Yes, that would be my...
That would be a transfer.
That's off of my head.
I think those are the only questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Madden.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just offer my thoughts in a relatively high-level sense as one of the new faces on council, about the budget and the circumstances that we've inherited. And two things really jump to mind as we look at it, and they're kind of conflicting in terms of solution. One is that our taxes are substantially higher than our neighboring counties. Two is that our folks are paid substantially less than their peers in neighboring counties. It's incredibly tough to fix both of those things. What I will offer, again, on a high-level basis, are two things that I'd like for us to examine. The first is something that's come up a number of times throughout the year, and we touched on a bit today, which is that from an auditing perspective, we don't have a centralization of that, of that process in the hands of the person who's been elected to do so, our controller. The fact that we have departments who are tasked and taking on their own decision-making about who their auditor is going to be, strikes me as a, a bad structure to have. So I would call on, on county council to, to consider the merits of, of centralizing our auditing with the person who's been elected to do so, our controller. The second thing that I'd like to highlight, and again, it's, it comes back to something that I've touched on a lot over the past year, it's when I look at that pie chart and I see the biggest piece of it, forty-one percent of it is the administration of justice, one hundred and forty-six million dollars spent per year. And looked at another way, if we just look at the unreimbursed tax dollars, so your tax dollars that you spend on, on your county government each year, thirty percent of that, thirty cents on every dollar you spend in tax dollars go to our prison. This is the county jail. These are not hardened criminals. These are folks who are serving, if convicted, time up to two years. This is a population that according to our own intake examinations, four out of five are dealing with a mental health issue or a drug addiction issue or both. So what I'd offer is, instead of spending fifty million dollars a year incarcerating folks who, if they were able to come up with bail, an average of about twenty-five hundred dollars. if they were able to come up with bail, an average of about $2,500, they would be on the outside. Diversionary means rehabilitation on the outside is cheaper, it's more effective in reducing recidivism, and by not doing so, we're crowding out a budget that we could be spending on reducing taxes and paying our folks better. So again, I know I'm speaking high level here today, but I think in the nature of the meeting, that's, that's what's best, but I, I call on all of us to consider, and it's not something that happens in a vacuum with county council, it's something that must happen in collaboration with our DA and with our judiciary, to work effectively, to be efficient with the administration of justice. We talked about today, what can we do with the sheriff's office and the court system to perhaps reduce costs there? And again, really think about people who don't need to be incarcerated and will, we will be more effective in, in getting them back on their feet and being productive members of society outside of prison. What can we do there? That's all I had today.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to again reiterate my thanks to Mary Ann, Jim, So, and Mr. Hagg for the excellent job they've done. They once again put a no tax increase budget in front of us. I know I've been driving them crazy a little this week, asking for a little bit more of the no tax increase and a little bit more money for our valued employees, as Sheriff Sanders touched on, and I hope to continue that conversation before we go on to the final budget next week. So once again, thank you very much, I'm a fellow county citizen and county council. I don't know what we do ahead. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sheriff Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of brief comments. I am pleased to be able to have a fifth year consecutive, consecutive year with no tax increase and, you know, and really open to the opportunity to be able to consider a possible decrease as we've discussed in previous conversations. I think, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity for us to give back to residents in Delaware County and it's something that we should certainly take a look at and make sure that it's fiscally responsible to do. The, the budget that we have presented continues to control our expenses and I think the positive economic growth in the county that we heard from our economic development director is an opportunity for us to continue improving the revenue sources that come into the county. Another issue that was thrown out was the increases to the employees. We do have a 3% increase budget in there and there's been some conversation on increasing that in different ways, whether it's in the sheriff's department and/or other and all areas within the county. And I think that those are things for certain consideration as well. And then I encourage, you know, our staff and our department heads to continue looking for the grant opportunities. We bring a lot of grants funding into the county and I think that that is certainly a way for the county to help cover expenses by and provide much-needed services within the county. Also to continue the technology upgrades, we've spent a lot of time on SAP and some conversions within the county. And I would just encourage that we continue to look for the efficiencies in our budget that we can accomplish through technology enhancements in the county. And then also note the two and a half percent budget reduction, or $2.5 million budget reduction in our health insurance plan. That is, you know, come based on a lot of different initiatives that Executive Marion Grace and our departments have implemented to make Delaware County a healthier place to live and work for our staff as well. And I think, you know, it's fantastic when you can see reductions in your benefits costs such as, you know, a significant amount such as that, and continue to encourage us to look for new and different ways to control those benefit costs as well.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Ron. My comments would be, again, to commend our Executive Director and the Budget Department for the work that they put in. As I often comment, budgets are not made in November of, of the end of the year, but they are indeed done all year long and especially here, we begin in earnest in August to form the budget. A lot of effort goes into it, not only our Budget Department, our Executive Director, but all of our various department heads and the employees that we have in our county. They're the ones that are able to deliver these budgets to us at, in these years that have allowed us not to increase taxes over the past four years and likely this fifth year. That's seen, that's borne out by the fact that it's something unusual you see today, that our expenditures are actually being reduced in this budget from 357 million, $51,000 to 354 million, $877,000. That is not seen in this day and age very often, and that's testament to our employees who are able to control those costs. I agree that we need to take a look at some of our employee wages in order to make the county competitive. I would ask everybody to please keep in mind that the way we structure is that counties are paid, or employees are paid a salary and we do provide medical benefits at no cost to the employees, which needs to be figured in, especially when you compare us against other counties. That being said, I think that especially those who are on the lower end of the wage earning scale, we need to look at in order to be competitive, raising those in order to be competitive and quality people. All that being said, I submitted a recommendation, which is thrown at Mr. Cole, joined with me, to the Executive Director, where I believe that even after the proposed balanced budget with the calls for no tax increase, we would have a, an unassigned fund balance remaining of additional $4.326 million. I believe that we ought to continue to look at using those, that amount of money in order to reduce the real estate tax burden on the residents. And I recognize that if we did that entire amount, that would come out to about a 2.5, 2.55% tax decrease. And as I said, I recognize that for the average home, it, it's not a implication that you'd be able to take. However, I do believe that for many households, that may be a co-pay for a senior, for a prescription drug, maybe a family dinner for that family for an evening, they may pay for other incidental things, but regardless of the amount or what it is, I believe that that money, if we can do it, is better in the pockets of our residents rather than in the pockets of the government. And I believe that we should do that, and it is my intention to offer an amendment at the time that we consider adopting budget ordinance to present a tax decrease. I think we still need to work with our Budget Department and all the rest of council working on how we can balance all of these different desires and priorities to reward the employees and, and give them a bump, but also return monies to our taxpayers, not really returning, but allow them to keep some of their own money. So that's what my intention is, that we can work together to accomplish that. So therefore, unless there's any further from council, we run to adjourn the public hearing.
Sheriff, do you have a motion to adjourn?
For a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
The ayes have.
Thank you very much for attending.